Good evening, everybody. It's 7:08 PM, and I'd like to call the public portion of this meeting back into session, and I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So the board just came out of a non-public meeting under RSA 91-A, 3-2-C, and A, and that we keep all matters discussed confidential until, in the opinion of the majority of the board, the circumstances no longer apply, except to provide the bookkeeper with necessary information for payroll purposes. So Joe, was that a second?
Yes.
It was like an early second?
Yes, it was.
We'll take it, though. All right, so that was a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. I'd like to start off by, you know, thanking the outgoing board members for their service to the town, and I'd like to welcome the new board members to their first meeting. And, you know, as they say, hope springs eternal, and yesterday, I think, was the first day of spring. So I'm sitting up here tonight. I have a lot of hope, a lot of optimism, for the year that we have in front of us. I think most people have listened to me over the last couple of months. A little disappointed we're in a default budget, but not unexpected, but disappointed, and you'll hear a lot more about this as we go through the year. But hopeful that we're going to get a lot of stuff done for the town, move the town forward. So at this point, every year, we do a reorganization of the board, and in my opinion, when it comes to the first position, which is chairman, in my opinion, I believe the right person for the job going into this year is the gentleman to my left, and I would like to give him my endorsement, and I would like to make a motion for Bob Marchand to be the chair of the Board of Selectmen. I'll entertain a second, and then we can have discussion if necessary. Anybody want a second?
Second.
So it looks like Mike was first, so we have a second. Any discussion? All right, well, I will call for a vote, and why don't we do this one as a roll call vote? Dan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so congratulations, Mr. Marchand, as chairman of the Board of Selectmen. So if I had a gavel, I'd give you a gavel. The only thing is, you have to promise you can pronounce the name El Cidino.
Yeah.
That's going to be a requirement, so...
Well, first of all, I'd like...
I've had some problems with that.
I'd like to thank Matt and the rest of the board for nominating me chair. It's both an honor and a privilege to be able to be of service to the town and to be sitting up here. So with that said, we're going to move on, and we're going to fill the vice chairman's role. Would anybody like to make a... If not, I will nominate Mr. Mike Conley for said position.
Second.
We have a second?
You do? Who's second? You have to speak up, so people can hear you.
I will. I'll try.
Move your microphone.
Well, usually, when you're on that side, we can hear you. Now you're here.
Any discussion?
Second.
There being none, we will do a roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, and Joe?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to the ex officios' positions. We're going to fill those. The first one would be for the planning board.
How do you guys want to do this?
So let me throw something out there, because let's have the list first, maybe, of what the... And just so people understand, the ex officios are... That's a statutory thing, right? They become a voter on the board. We... We'll talk about liaisons afterwards, but... So we have a planning board ex officio. We have a rec commission ex officio.
And conservation.
Conservation.
That's it.
And that's it. So we have three ex officios. Currently, Bob's the ex officio to planning. I have recreation, and conservation is now open, correct?
Yes.
So would we want to take the approach of trying to fill the open one first, and then maybe decide?
I'll take conservation.
You want to take conservation? So I will make a motion to nominate Joe to be the ex officio to conservation.
Second.
Remember, you're the chair now.
Okay. Roll call. Any discussion?
Aye.
Roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That's unanimous.
So you don't have to do a roll call vote, because you're all here.
I just did that for the chair, because I thought it was, you know, more dramatic. We want to... We want to make sure people tune into these meetings on TV, so...
So Bob, if I remember correctly, you wanted to stay on planning, because you had something you wanted to see through to the end, so...
Yeah, I don't have a problem staying on as the ex officio on the planning board.
I'll make that motion for Bob to serve as ex officio on planning.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who's second?
Mike did.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And I will make the... To have Matt stay on as the conservation, recreation.
Second.
Who got that one? Give it to him. He's not...
Stop talking.
All right, seconded by Dan. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. So congratulations to everybody. So those are all filled. Next on the agenda is requisitions, the fire department.
Julia, let's... We had liaisons there, and if you don't mind me just talking to this one, maybe, to start. So ex officios, we've done statutory voting. Many years ago, we invented these positions of liaisons to the departments. I think the intention was to increase the communication between the department and the Board of Selectmen. If I'm going to be very blunt, as somebody who's been here for a while, it didn't work. It made it worse, quite frankly. And liaisons became kind of a role that people didn't understand. It became confusing for the department heads. They're like, do I report to this person and not the board? Do I call the town administrator? Who do I talk to? So I am going to propose, as a motion, Diane, I would move that we suspend the program of designating selectmen liaisons to departments until such time that the board decides that they want to go back to it. So, in other words, a trial period. So I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion on that?
The only thing I would add is, if you're a department head, and there are some here tonight, this doesn't mean you can't talk to individual board members, you know? You can still... If you want to call a board member because they have a particular interest in something, or you want to bounce things off of them, that's certainly something you can still do for the health of communication. And then probably that board member's going to end the phone call by saying, make sure you fill the town administrator, and make sure you get on the agenda. That's what...
And the whole idea is behind, is what we've always been talking about, especially the past year, about this micromanaging. It's time that the department heads run their departments. If they have an issue that they can't resolve on their own, they have the town administrator to go to. Talk to the town administrator, bounce things off of one another, see if they can't resolve it with him. And if need be, in that discussion, it comes up that it needs to be addressed by the Board of Selectmen, then it will be put on the agenda, and we can address it if it needs to be done that way. But it's time that this town starts functioning the way that it should, with the departments running their departments, and the selectmen just doing what the town people voted us to do. So everybody has their role, and it's essential that each cog in that wheel does its part to carry the load, instead of just a few. So with that being said...
And I just want to add, because it's going to go on public record, and Matt has brought it up to us. If you think about what a selectman's power is, it is not by himself. A selectman has no power unless he's in a quorum, having a vote as one board. I think that got away from us in the liaison role a little bit, for some people. So that's part of the reason why we're trying to go this way, to give the department heads back what they deserve, which is the power to run their departments, to shine, rise above, and work with the town administrator to get what they need. If something's needed, we're here. But what I don't want, I don't think the members of the board want, is for us to tell a department head what to do. They should be telling us what they need to do. So I just want to try to bring some clarity there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? All right, all in favor of the proposed motion?
Aye.
Aye. And that would be unanimous. Thank you. So now, with that done, we will move on to requisitions from the fire department, please.
Good evening. Congratulations to the new board members. What you have in front of you are two requisitions. One is for software update that was included in the proposed new budget, and the second one, we did not do last year, we've been doing for many years now, which is to meet the NFPA standards for ladder testing, hose testing, and nozzle testing. We didn't do it last year, because there was tight budget. We're in a default budget now, so before... We're working on a default budget, so that none of that was included in the default. But it kind of needs to get done. So if the board votes to approve, if you have the hard copies, if not, I can... If you give me the authorization to sign it, I'll sign it. But if you have the hard copies, both sheets have on the back a place for somebody to sign. Or I can, like I said, if the board wants to give me the authorization, I'll electronically sign them tomorrow morning, obviously with the board's approval.
So chief, this is basically just periodic maintenance of your tools required to perform your jobs, right?
Correct. It's the required yearly testing.
Yep.
We haven't even... I'll be in front of use later in the year for the apparatus, for that testing. Some of it was... I believe one truck was not done last year, because the budget was getting too tight.
So I guess it's worth saying, based on what you've described, is we're kind of doing something we should, that we need to do, but we didn't do it last year. So if we didn't do it last year, it's not part of the default budget. So if we do this, we're taking money away from...
Something else.
Something else, because that's how we're going to live for the next year. So that's just something to think about.
The... Both of those came out of, in the past, dues and contracts, or however it is. Last year, the software is new. We knew about it last year, that's why we included it into our budget, because that expires, I believe, in two months. The testing was in there, but since we had to move money around, it was never done. It was never done. That's more of a liability thing. That it should get done. The board, many years ago, voted to move the fire department forward and have all the apparatus, regular maintenance, NFPA pump testing, same thing for the hoses, because the board received a letter from, at that time, Deputy Sir Royce, because we had an issue with the hoses letting go and nozzles letting go at our structure fire. And that's when the board decided, they put their foot down, from this point on, it gets done. I'll take the heat on it. Unfortunately, we thought we were going to run out of funds last year with the fuel. It was never done. This year, that's why I'm coming in front of you right at the beginning.
So you didn't update the software last year?
The software was updated three years ago. The type of... It's firehouse software.
Yep.
The contract was three years.
Okay.
So it ends.
Okay.
It ends this year.
Okay. So then it's three years, again, late.
Well, it'll be every year from this point on.
From this point on, it'll be every year?
Correct. And that's where we input all the incidents for the state.
Sure.
And for the federal government. That's what we do payroll on. That's what we do vehicle maintenance inspections on.
It's your operation. I get it. Yeah. Okay.
Correct.
Anybody want to make a motion?
So before you make a motion, the software that you have, it's not a subscription fee? Is that a correct statement, or is it... When I read it, it sounded like it was a subscription.
It's for... It's for it to be cloud-based, so we can access it from anywhere. That is, it's yearly fee.
So it's an annual subscription fee?
Correct.
Okay. I had it right, then.
Correct.
So the motion is correct, the proposed motion?
So I'm going to... Did you want to do it?
Thank you, Diane.
No, go ahead. No, you sound great.
I'm excited. I can make motions now. So I'm going to move to sign requisition 1057-FD in the amount of $3,204.11 to fail-safe for the annual fire equipment inspection. Funds to come from the 2023 Fire Department Budget Line Item 422011.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Guy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I'll do the next one, if I feel like... I would move to sign requisition 1058-FD in the amount of $1,899.01 to ESO for the annual subscription fee for incident reporting software. Funds to come from the 2023 Fire Department Budget Line Item 422011.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Guy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
So just real quick, you're saying somebody has to sign one of... On these back?
Correct. The hard copies... Those are copies. I just took it... I can sign... If the board gives me the authorization, I already have it set up. I just electronically put my name in, that it's been approved, and away we go.
So do you need them to authorize both... For both requisitions, you need authorization?
That would be real nice.
I'll make a motion to allow the chief to sign both requisitions. Second.
Who's second? Thank you.
Joe did. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
All right, we will move on to the ARPA and EOC update, please.
Here I am. Congratulations, you newbies. I'll try not to scare you, although my mother did say I could hurt you, so don't give me a hard time. So the EOC and the ARPA update, just as a reminder, this is done at all of your meetings. The ARPA update has to continue in order for us to be transparent, according to the U.S. Treasury. So if there's not much to say, I'll tell you, there's not much to say, but unfortunately, you're going to be stuck with me for a while. So for the ARPA update, this week, the AEDs are being placed into service. So if your department had one of the older ones, you'll see the deputy coming around shortly with the new ones. We found out in some cases, the cabinets are too small for the new AEDs. So we may have to buy a few new cabinets, but we're addressing that... Actually, we'll be addressing that tomorrow, so I'll keep you posted on that. As you know, for those of you that voted, thank you, in TV land, those of you that came out on that horrific day. The voting booths arrived. We set up a couple of samples for you. We couldn't get the curtains in time. They're not coming till May 1st, a little bit late for the elections, but we'll tackle them our next round of elections. Also, all the selectmen and the ARPA committee got my most recent spreadsheet for the ARPA expenses. If you have any questions, you know, on the tabs on the bottom, I've kind of broken it down. There's places where it says "promised but not spent." That means we haven't signed a contract or anything, but we're in talking stages to do things. So I think I did it in a pale blue. That money hasn't been spent. We do have a meeting tomorrow. We've got to address a couple of things, and we'll update a little bit more on our budget to see where we're going with some of the grainy park, the transfer station. There was a couple of things on my list, I can't remember, but at any rate, I'll keep you posted on that. Remember that ARPA is supposed to be transparent, so when I send you these things, like the spreadsheet, it's not a confidential document. Not that I want you going out there posting it, because we do have some payroll items there, but it is not confidential. And lastly, for the ARPA update, the fire chief was able to go and see our new fire department rescue boat. We hope to have it in another month or so. It's kind of exciting. He was pretty pleased with what he saw, so we're just waiting, I think, for the labeling to be done on it. The EOC update, so in the last 14 days, Emergency Operations Center, we had enhanced monitoring due to the election day snowstorm. We assisted residents where needed. We monitored the weather, road conditions. I worked closely with the police, the fire, and the highway department. We had many roads that had no power, wires down, trees down. For those of you that haven't signed up to get the alert message, the phone message that we do, might be a good idea, go on the town website, go to the emergency management tab, and it's the top tab on the left that allows you to receive our messages when we have an issue. As you probably know, COVID-19 pandemic supposedly is sunsetting on May 11th, but just because the government says it's going away, it's not over. The pandemic is still here. Pay attention to how you feel, your children, your seniors, people around you, and for heaven's sakes, if you're sick, don't come to work. We don't want to see you. No offense. And I also have COVID test kits for anyone that might need them. You can call me on my cell, 978-360-4152. In addition, Homeland Security reached out to us over the weekend and gave us till the end of business day today, which I guess was 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, for the road agent, the fire department, the police department, and myself to come up with costs relevant to the election day storm. There's a chance that the governor's going to declare this a reimbursable disaster. So we're hoping... We did our final total, and I submitted it today, actually, five minutes before. So in 48 hours last week, we spent $23,291.26. Let's keep our fingers crossed, because if we get reimbursed, you've heard us talk about a default budget. This will help us. It will go right back into the budgets where the people had to spend money. And lastly, I'm working on an emergency operation performance grant, and in hopes of it being approved for more money for a couple of our departments, specifically our police and fire. As you know, we're in a default budget, and if we can get any more money, we certainly do need it. So we're working really hard. I'll keep you posted on that. And Mr. Chairperson, can I say something that has nothing to do with emergency management? Say yes.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So I'm done with ARPA and EOC, but while I'm just standing here, I want to remind everyone, for the conservation people, Earth Day is April 22nd. Conservation Commission is working with the Newton Greenhouse for Earth Day. We're going to be giving out Earth Day trash bags. We have about 500 of them. We're going to ask that you clean up your road, your road frontage. Do not leave them on the road, or the big guy behind me will slaughter me. Please bring them to the transfer station. And the first 150 people on February 22nd, which is Earth Day, is going to get a gift from the Conservation Commission, which will include actual water bottles that are engraved with the town of Newton, and seeds from the Newton Greenhouse. So keep that in mind. I'll probably remind you at every meeting, because we certainly need to keep our roads clean. And I think that's it, unless there's questions.
You have a couple of motions that you want to done for the letters?
Oh, can someone read them, since I don't have them?
I... Yeah.
So basically, on March 14th, the two warrant articles that Trish wanted passed, so the board now needs to instruct the treasurer to open a new account and instruct the trustees to close an account.
Yeah, I got it. Motion to authorize the treasurer to open a new bank account titled Emergency Management Operating Revolving Fund, and to further deposit the funds from the closed Emergency Ops Center Expendable Trust Fund, when available, into the newly created account per warrant article seven and eight passage on March 14, 2023.
Second. Mike, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
And the second part of that is move to authorize the trustees of the trust funds to close the Emergency Ops Center Expendable Trust Fund. The fund will be deposited into the Emergency Management Operating Revolving Fund, per article seven and eight passage on March 14, 2023.
Second. Mike, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
And the second part of that is move to authorize the trustees of the trust funds to close the Emergency Ops Center Expendable Trust Fund. The fund will be deposited into the Emergency Management Operating Revolving Fund, per article seven and eight passage on March 14, 2023.
Second. Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you, Trish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commercial trash hauling, renewal for Newton Waste.
Good evening. Congrats to the new members of the board. My name is Steve St. Sierra. I'm the owner of Newton Waste Company, here to request permit for 2023, and answer any other questions.
So I think what we should mention is, due to a clerical error, I would say, that we... Typically, we have you come in December, right? Usually, December, at least January, and lost in current events was that meeting being scheduled. So that's why we're talking about a 2023 permit now, three months into the year, so...
So I guess I'll give you my question, is why do we make him come in every year?
They actually don't make me come in every year.
Oh, okay. You just do it, because you just...
But given there were a couple new board members, and it had been a while since I've been here, I figured it would be a good idea to come in.
Yeah, so we wrote a policy around this, right? Because a policy is meant to fit anybody who came forward to do it. And we made it a one-year permit, so... But he's right. Like, sometimes we just do it administratively, right? And I believe it's... Diane, is it in November where we seek out other bids, too?
It's always out there.
Yeah.
We don't seek out bids. It's a lottery, and nobody...
Right, sure.
You have to just apply for it, and nobody ever does, so...
Nobody does. He's got a monopoly going.
Yeah.
I'll motion to approve the permit renewal request for Steve St. Sierra for commercial trash hauling from January 1st to December 31st, 2023, per the commercial trash hauling policy.
Second. Seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
And don't forget, you need to pay the $500 fee.
The permit fee.
I won't forget. Thank you all very much.
And make sure you recycle that can.
I'm not putting it in the trash.
All eyes are watching.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Steve. Resident proposed restructuring of building permit fees.
Congratulations. I'm sure you guys have all looked at this. I just put something together based on my experiences.
Excuse me. John, can you introduce yourself just for anybody?
John Sylvia, Newton resident. I'm in the construction field and recently put in in-law apartment, or an ADU, as the town refers to it, on my house. And some of the things and the way that the fees are structured and worded, I should also mention, I'm also on the zoning board, so I'm privy to some of the projects that are coming through in town. And I thought that it would be prudent to put together a working document for the selectmen and the current or future building inspector to review and make sure that there's no loopholes, it's tight, the fees are where they should be based on surrounding towns, and that's the document I compiled. I don't know that everybody wants me to read through the entire 15 pages for you. Happy to do so if you want.
I think that would be all right. Not to.
Okay.
Time out.
Not to.
I didn't know which way that was going.
I just wanted to get everybody's attention.
And I think the purpose of this is to just bring some attention to it, especially with the budget, the issues surrounding the budget, the way that we're looking to solve some of the budget issues moving forward, to limit our exposure and to just make it a very tight document and help the town out. I don't think, you know, solo, this is something that could be solved tonight, but I think that this is a good start to maybe set up a working session with the building inspector, with you guys, however you guys want to structure it. And I wanted to just bring light to it so that everybody was aware of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the fact you put a lot of work into this. We appreciate that. Sometimes we get stuff that's like, not as clear. So, you know, my thing would be to certainly share this, you know, with anybody who wants to review it, right? Residents might have an opinion about it. I think what I like about it is, we say this a lot these days, we want to be market competitive, right? We don't want to do our thing. So it's great that you've referenced some surrounding towns, even, you know, we're right on the border, so you even get a Massachusetts town in here, right?
And I think that's kind of pertinent, and I think that the other thing when we're looking at how Massachusetts does it is you also have to take into effect that they do have a sales tax. So their rates may be a little bit different, structured different, because they have that sales tax to offset some of the other expenses within the towns, right? So I think that's a key factor to keep in mind when you are looking at that. I did only include the one, you know, just to kind of make sure that you guys were aware of that.
Yeah, I definitely got a better appreciation of reading through the entire 15 pages and looking at it and being able to see the difference between the way ours is laid out and the other towns, and I could see the points that you were making about where and when other inspections couldn't be done. And I think you hit the nail right on the head, to working document that our building inspector, we would like him to be able to look at it and, you know, maybe work with you and go over it and see what we can do.
I'm happy to help. I just, you know, again, this was just a preliminary thing, and I think it's definitely, you know, it's definitely not something that's going to be put to bed tonight, in my opinion. But I think it should be, you know, reviewed, and I think it can be better. And not that I think it's bad, I just think it can be a lot better.
Yeah, and we all talked about it, and it would definitely behoove the town to do so. So we all want to thank you very much for all your hard work that you put into this.
Can we actually make sure that this is shared with the planning board?
Yes.
Because I think they need to look at this. I'd like Jen to look at this, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I brought a couple extra copies if you...
We have it all.
You got the digital copies, too?
Yep. No, we should socialize it.
Yeah, exactly. Spread it around. Anybody have anything to ask, any questions?
No, well done. Thank you.
Good job.
Happy to help.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
So was there a decision to make, that you're going to do a work group, or you're just going to have them work with the building inspector?
I think since, if you don't mind, since Sam's here, Sam, do you mind coming up here? We'll put you on the spot on the heat of the... Exactly, yeah. You look so great, we want to bring you into the group.
Sam Zanini, the Assistant Building Inspector. Yeah, I had a chance to go through it. There was some good stuff in there, and I think even if it's not relative to, obviously take a look at the fees, but there are probably, we could probably tweak, if we can work with Jim, too, on that, the town administrator, tweak some of the processes, and there's definitely room to clarify some things and make things a little bit easier to understand, and maybe even bring back some things we used to do prior that kind of went away, so.
Sure.
Nothing's perfect. Everything needs improvement, so, yeah, we can work through that. And I appreciate his time and lightening.
So at some point, you guys can hook up, make some time for one another, maybe sit down and discuss it.
I'll leave that up to the board, the town administrator, who I'm open to working with anyone.
Can we put a placeholder in the future to come back to this? Is he giving you 30 days, do you want 45 days?
Yeah, 30 days, 45 days, that's fine.
Okay.
Just so we don't lose track of it.
Right, yeah.
Second meeting in April, we'll revisit this.
I think that's April 18th.
We're good?
Is that good for you?
Perfect.
Good.
All right, moving on. Oh, the final purchase and sales agreement for Thornell Road.
So I can give a little update on this. Update is, we're at the point where our town council has reviewed this and made a couple of tweaks, and I do know that the buyer still needs to review it with his attorney. So we're kind of at a point where we probably should make a motion to, you know, and we kind of did this before a couple of months ago, but, you know, make sure that the chair is in a position to sign this for the next step. So while we have the updated PNS in our hands, we're waiting for the buyer to get back to us on it. But once the buyer gets back, we can go from there.
So what happened was the buyer had his attorney adjust the purchase and sales agreement, and then our attorney looked at it and went over it, and he readjusted, for the town's sake, a couple of items to make it more palatable for both sides, and that's why now his attorney's going to be looking back at it. But we feel as though everything that's been done at this point should be agreeable between both parties, and once that happens, like Matt said, it should be just a point of signing it so that the sale goes through.
So I think, Diane, I'm sorry, your suggestion was you get a motion so that it can just move ahead in the process, right?
I was going to make that motion. Should I make the motion?
Sounds good.
All right, I will move to authorize the chairman to sign the purchase and sales agreement for tax map 12-1-1 upon recommendation from the town council, when available.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. All right. Greeny Park permit renewal for the Sanborn baseball and softball teams.
So I just had a question. I'll make the motion, but I just have one question. Is this, when they have the other baseball teams, whatever it is, it's a travel league come in, do they do their own permit?
Yes.
They will not be having that this year.
This year, that's okay. I just didn't know.
And they actually didn't have it last year either.
Oh, okay, they didn't.
Yeah, this is just strictly for Sanborn, yeah.
Because I know that there was issues with it before, and I didn't know if they did their own permit, or were they piggybacking off of this permit?
There's no piggybacking.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Yeah, Sanborn's filing for their own, to be able to use them.
I'll move to approve the permit renewal requ... Wrong one. I'll move to approve the permit application from Sanborn Baseball and Softball Association to use the ball fields at Greeny Park from April 1st through December 31st, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. And next, we're going to move on to the Wex credit card for the transfer station, which is simply saving tax money that would be charged on said fuel that they use in the tractors down there and equipment at the transfer station. They would be able to get it at the yard so that we wouldn't, like I said, be paying the state taxes on it, so it'd be a little bit cheaper to save some money.
So just to clarify, then, what do you mean by yard?
Transfer station, oh, the fueling yard.
So, no, they have, what this does, I think you got the two things mixed up. There's the state fuel distribution center that's in Kingston, that's different. This is a credit card that they could go to, like, a local gas station that accepts it?
Oh, they can go anywhere. I thought they had to go to the yard.
No, no, two different things. Okay, so just so we understand that it's just a credit card they can use locally if accepted, and then the taxes are taken off.
Where are they getting their fuel now? How are they getting their fuel now?
They get it at a local station, but now they're paying the tax, right?
Right.
So...
So they already have a credit card for their fuel?
I don't know if he uses a credit card or what he's doing.
Huh?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Usually invoiced.
So they go to the local station, the station writes a little slip, that slip comes to the bookkeeper who pays it. But it includes taxes.
I'll move to authorize the chairman to sign the application for a Wex bank card for the transfer station to use for fueling town-owned vehicles.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Grant from Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Development.
So basically, because it's over 40,000, it's over $10,000, you need to just set up for a public hearing so that, to accept this money. I had suggested April 18th. That gives us time to put it in the paper. You could do it at 7:00 prior to your public meeting.
This is the grant that the planning board got, correct?
I believe this is, yes, this is...
Yes.
Yeah.
To improve the master plan.
Oh, is that what, okay.
Yeah, so what it is, is it's the town study on housing and development. So the planning board received a grant in order for the legal counsel, Jen, and her crew to be able to conduct this study and help further along the master plan. So this money is going to be paying for that, so that the town is paying nothing at all towards this. This is all money that's coming from the state to supply and pay for that, and there's two separate parts to that. There's an initial piece that will be done that some of that money pays for, and if the planning board moves forward to do the second part, then said money comes out of the remainder of that $50,000. I forget how much covers the first part and then how much covers the second part, but there's two parts to it for the planning board and the study. And like I said, it's to help fulfill the master plan and get that filled out and get that taken care of, because it's been, 2007, Dan, is it? Since the last time the master plan for this town was updated, so it's long overdue.
So now you pose a question to me, then. So this grant that you're getting now, is it coming in, is it $40,000 and some, I think, $40,900? Are you getting another grant on top of that, another, more money on top of that?
No, it's the one grant, but it covers the two pieces.
So, okay, so then what I need to know is what is the amount that you, because you're going to have to do it in two separate public hearings, then?
Okay.
I believe is what you'll end up having to do.
Jen would know how it's coming. Because it was going right to Jen, not to her, but to her company, and then they were going to disperse it, and we were going to not even have to deal with that, but the state said, no, it's going to go to the town first. So how it's coming, I don't know. Jen would know, or maybe Jim knows, but that's, I'm not positive how it's coming.
Right, at first, we thought the state was actually going to hold on to the money, and then Jen's outfit was going to just submit the bill and receive payment, but they were informed that the money is actually coming to the town.
All right, I'll check with the planning board administrator to find out how much you're getting, and then do you want, when the public hearing would be on April 18th, to accept whatever that amount would be?
Sure. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Very good.
You might have to do a 7 and a 715, right? So...
Well, it depends. From what it sounds like, you're going to get 50% here, and then later down the road, you're going to get another 50%.
So it's not back to back?
That's what it's sounding like to me.
Right, that's if the planning board does the second part of what can be done, correct?
Cool.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Diane.
Yep.
All right, moving on from that, resignations. We have a trustee of the trust funds. Know anything about that, Joe?
Nothing at all.
No.
I would move to accept Joseph Simone's resignation as trustee of the trust fund with thanks and gratitude effective March 21st, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan.
Sure.
Any discussion? There being none. All in favor?
Aye.
And deputy treasurer?
I would move to accept James Summers' resignation as the deputy treasurer with thanks and gratitude effective March 21st, 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I would, you've probably beaten me to it, Diane, go ahead.
So before you move off that topic, you have a bunch of letters that need to go to the trustees, to the bank, and to the treasurer, and that's your next motion, is to get those letters signed?
Definitely, and what I wanted to add is perhaps we can put something on the town website that we have, I believe now we have an opening for Joe's position, we have an opening for deputy treasurer.
Well, we may have filled the deputy treasurer's position.
Really?
She's still not here, so we got a good positive lead on that one.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
Hmm? Okay. So we may have somebody that will take that.
Perfect, so whatever we don't have, we should put a quick little blur about that.
And I understand there are some candidates that are interested in fulfilling my unexpired term.
Oh, nice.
Which I'll bring it up to the trustees.
Cool.
I have a, kind of like a transition meeting with them this Thursday.
Cool.
I would move to sign all correspondence as needed to update all town accounts held at North Shore Bank, consistent with the resignation of town elected candidates.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other thing I would mention, too, is since, if, and Diane's got the actual decision that came from the New Hampshire Supreme Court, so, not a big deal, but if somebody wants to be appointed by us for the year to fill an elected position, we have to do that in public. So we would normally have the person just come to the podium, say hello, I'd be interested, maybe talk about their qualifications, then we have to vote on it here. It's public because it's an elected position, just so everybody knows.
And I did see, I don't know if we had something to say, but...
Did she raise her hand?
No. She just, yeah, like she was talking.
Yeah. Mike, your phone thing is muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
All right, I guess not.
Who was that, MJ?
Yeah.
MJ, did you put your hand up?
She's not listening.
No, I unmuted myself by accident.
Okay.
Carry on.
That's all right, we miss your voice. That's all right, we miss your voice. Thanks, Mary Jo. All right, and I would just like to thank everybody for their service in those roles that they perform for the town. And I know Joe, Joe's done it for quite a while and he's done a great job with it, taking good care of the money. So thank you, Joe. Where are we, other business? Anybody got any other business they wanna bring up?
I'll just blow through the manifests first, get that done. I would move to sign vendor manifest dated March 14th, 2023 in the amount of $262,435.27.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to sign police special details revolving fund dated March 14th, 2023 in the amount of, I believe it's $987.27, right?
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
I would move to sign payroll manifest for pay period February 27th to March 11th with a pay date of March 16th, 2023. Total payroll is $70,359.67, of which includes $352.6 of ARPA administrative costs.
Second.
Seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
There is a veterans' tax credit, so I would move to sign veterans' tax credit for tax map 5-4-5, beginning tax year 2023.
Second.
Seconded by Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
And before we get to appointments, any other business by the board? Because I do have one.
Yeah, I have a couple. Going forward, I'd like to see public comment at the front of the agenda if everybody's agreeable to that. I think any residents that come out and wanna speak, we should allow them to. I know, Matt, you had said that there was a policy on what they could speak to or what they allow or whatever, but I just think that it should be at the front of the agenda and it should be on the agenda so that the public knows that they can come and speak. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see.
Well, one thing at a time.
Sure. Oh, you don't need to make a motion on that.
No, but you need to discuss it, right?
Okay.
So the question I would have, are you going to allow people to come in and voice or, you know, via Zoom, or do they have to be in person?
No, I think in, in person, they can be in person.
That's, you're, so do you mean?
That needs a motion, but the Zoom thing, if they don't have their picture up, like I don't wanna get in the weeds on that.
Well, that's, okay, that's, I'm just, you just need to clarify that.
It's, you're gonna get into the weeds, but I'm allowed for in-person public comment. Like, I would like to see that. You're gonna do Zoom and stuff and people don't have their, their picture up or you don't know who they are, I'd just rather avoid all of that together. But in-person public comment at the front of the agenda, I think, is an important thing to have and have it actually on the agenda.
I think it should be limited as well.
Yeah, two to three minutes, I think that's a, it's, it's, it's in there.
Yeah, and we don't want people to get up and just be being repetitious about the same thing.
Of course, I mean, that's up to us, we can do that during the meeting anyways, you know what I mean? That's, that's.
Right, where you can stop them, but yeah, I would suggest that exactly what you talked about, that we'll have to look in to make sure if there's anything already set in stone that we have to review that and look at that so that we can then move forward with that.
Yeah, it doesn't, the current policy doesn't really affect us doing that. It just gives us, you know, like, the ability, yeah. So my thing would be just to add it to the next agenda, try it on for size, so to speak, and just see what happens. If, if we have 100 people waiting on Zoom, maybe, maybe we wanna reevaluate that part of it, but, you know, hopefully people will take advantage of it, you know? And, because it can be a good, good, it can be a place where solutions can start, right? Somebody brings it forward, so I think we should try it.
All right, so we'll put it on the next agenda. You had something else?
Yeah, I'd like to see non-publics move to the back of the agenda, just because I think that that, you have people that are out here waiting sometimes, and if our non-public runs late, like it did today, I mean, it was only eight minutes, but still, I felt rushed in the non-public, I would have liked to spend more time doing what we were doing. So I would rather that be at the end of the meeting and allow for us to spend as much time as we need to do that. I just, I think it's better, it's a better look if we do it at the end.
Yeah, I don't mind trying it. Same, just see how it works. You know, hopefully Chief Alcindino and Chief Jewitt can, can, can stay up, I know.
He's still here.
And forget it, if we had Mike for non-public, just forget about that one.
So we can, we can do that for the next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, and Jim, I'm gonna ask you, talk to department heads and get their feedback on that for us.
Certainly, there can be no personnel matters discussed, anything that falls under the right to know law as an exemption can't be discussed here.
Right.
Right.
But I'm saying, talk to them about moving it to the back.
Oh, I see, thank you.
I had one, if nobody else has anything. I received an email from Jen Roden, who's the legal assistant to the planning board, that the town, a bridge of ours, and I'll read the letter real quick so that people know. So, R E N H D O T, Bridge Funding Opportunity, Newton Bridge. It's the bridge for Wilders Grove over Country Pond. The letter states, "The New Hampshire Department of Transportation is pleased to inform Newton that the bridge aid funding is planned to be available for the rehabilitation or replacement of the above noted bridge. As part of the upcoming 10-year plan process, N H D O T will reduce the number of red-listed bridges statewide with our available state and federal bridge funds. Based on New Hampshire DOT bridge inspection data and the bridge's current poor condition, the above noted bridge is considered one of up to 65 candidates for funding. Our bridge aid programs are funded with 80% state or 80% federal funds with the municipality responsible for 20% local match. These programs are reimbursement type grants in which the municipality covers 100% of pre-approved project cost initially and is subsequently reimbursed by the New Hampshire DOT's 80% share of the eligible cost incurred. Based on very preliminary data, New Hampshire DOT estimates the cost to rehabilitate or replace the above noted bridge is approximately," I hope everybody's sitting down, $664,800. Eight, yeah, 800. The municipality's 20% share is estimated to be $132,960. The actual project cost and local share will depend on the design of the bridge, inflation and other project-related factors are possible, are not possibly to be known at this time." So the New Hampshire DOT is currently beginning the enrollment process for the bridge aid program for official acceptance into the 10-year plan cycle anticipated to be approved in the summer of 2024. Accepted 10-year plan approved bridge projects will be programmed for construction in the years 2027 through 2032. Although we can't guarantee the funding will be available to enroll your project, we would like to know if your municipality is interested in applying for funds. This will allow us better development of our local bridge program for the upcoming 10-year plan cycle. If Newton is interested or not interested in beginning the enrollment process with New Hampshire DOT for the above noted bridge, please check the appropriate responses below and return a copy via email." And here's the important part that comes in. It says, "Yes, Newton is interested in applying for the bridge aid funding for the above noted bridge, or no, we're not." But it also states, "Please note that checking yes does not legally bind Newton to enrolling in the bridge aid program. We are simply looking for indications that if the bridge aid funding is available, that your municipality would be interested in pursuing a bridge aid project with New Hampshire DOT and your municipality would work towards obtaining the 20%, which means that we would be able to put in, apply for it. If we were to get it, then what we would start to do is put out warrants. So over the course of the next few years, we would be able to set up a fund and put some money into that fund to cover at least that 20%. And then we would end up having to somehow, like I said earlier, we would have to pay for the whole kit and caboodle and we would then get reimbursed that 80% back." So I'm just putting this all out there. It's non-binding, but I feel as though, as the numbers I just read, that it would be very important for us to at least enroll in this program and see what happens.
Yeah, thank you.
We did, we did respond on March 8th and we said, yes, we were interested. But I think Trish and Lisa have something to say about your thought on warrant articles. I think you have to collect all the money, not your 20%.
Yeah, the whole amount.
You have to get all the money first. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, Lisa will probably stand better than I, and certainly Mike can stand up, but in addition to all this, the grant that Mike and I are working on, which is $515,500, is 90%. It's not a reimbursement, we don't have to come up with money upfront, and we only have to come up with a 10% match. Now, we haven't been approved for it yet, but that's certainly better figures and better than thinking we've gotta come up with 600 and whatever out of his wonderful budget, which I'm not quite sure where that's gonna come from. So I just want you to know that. So, so even though, and the warrant article money, Lisa, you can talk to that, but it's kinda putting the cart before the horse, I think we'd be in trouble. My opinion.
It would not be a budget item, it would be a warrant article.
Yeah.
So the good news is we have a lot of time.
Yeah, well, that's what I was talking about. We would have said yes, but have to wait.
Couple of things that I heard, 2024 is when they're planning on issuing out the grant money, right? I heard that from what the, what you were reading, 2024? Which means you have to collect that $600,000 before 2024, which means you have, this is 2023, you're gonna have to collect it on the next warrant, on the next ballot, March 2024. Because it's reimbursable, you need to raise $600,000.
Well, no, the bit.
It'll get reimbursed, but you still have to raise and appropriate the full amount so that you can spend it and then get the money back. Now, you could have the warrant article say, you know, to raise and appropriate 600,000, whatever amount that is reimbursed, because it's gotta be acceptable expenditures. So the state DOT, they're going to say, nope, we don't like that expense, and they'll knock things off. And then they will reimburse up to 80%, not the whole 20%. So we need 600,000, and if you're gonna do that, you're gonna need to get out there early with the public and often to get them behind it. That's all I have to say.
Here we go, here we go, here we go.
I didn't wanna disappoint you, Matt.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We won't complicate this tonight, we'll talk about it in another selectmen's meeting. I've been working on this for six years. We've been red-listed for eight. It failed two years ago, we did a temporary repair for the COVID. I've been in contact with the Bridge Division and the environmental folks to change what's down there in its entirety. I haven't got approvals on anything yet. The, what Bob just read, great in concept. It's gonna take too long, and as Lisa and Trish just said, we have to raise way too much money that we're not gonna get. I mean, we'll just be real this about it now, tonight. So as great as that sounds, again, in concept, I would not suggest you to pursue that. Trish and I have one in the works, it's been a couple of months now.
It has.
We'll see if we apply, you know, are accepted in that application and we can pursue that because that's a more palatable way to go. And if that fails, then I'm hoping that in meetings I'm gonna have with the state agencies, we can change it, get the cost down, make some adjustments to that roadway and eliminate what is considered a bridge over there. Just get rid of it. It isn't that easy. Like I said, I've been working on this for five years to get everybody on the same page, but I'll just keep you updated and we'll talk about it in another meeting. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Sound all right?
Yep. All right, now, anybody else got any other business? Appointments.
I can take that one if you want. I would, I would move to sign appointments for Ann Banks, Betty Buffano and Carolyn Musima Kamau, I'm sure I got that totally wrong, as alternate Gale Library Trustees, term to expire March 31st, 2024.
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Selectmen's non-public and public meetings dated March 7th, 2023, and review non-public session minutes for unsealing. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move to accept the non-public and public meetings minutes dated March 7th, 2022, as written. Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Sorry, Diane.
Nope, that's what I told you, because you went to the meeting, so, Joe, you, you.
I'll change my abstention as well, as a.
Okay.
So 3, 4 and 2 abstain.
Yep, which makes sense because they weren't there at the meeting, so they don't have access to those minutes.
Okay, Mike, you're leaving?
I'll be right back, Matt.
Okay, thank you.
Any announcements? There being none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:17 PM.